I call to order the April 28th, 2015 meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us today here in the council chamber as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh Community Media Services. We are happy to have citizens participate in the city government in any way, so welcome to all. This time we'll ask the city clerk to take the roll call.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Stepanik.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present six.
I would now like Deb Allison Osby to lead us in the invocation and then pledge of allegiance by the Wave Robotics Team.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, this evening, I have three proclamations, and I will sit down here. The first proclamation is whereas the Continental Congress first declared a national day of prayer in 1775, making national days of prayer a longstanding American tradition, and whereas the national day of prayer became law in 1952 when unanimously passed by Congress and signed by President Harry S. Truman, and whereas May 7, 2015 marks the 64th Annual National Day of Prayer, and whereas the theme for 2015 is "Lord Hear Our Cry," emphasizing the need for all of us to place our faith in God, who is sovereign over all governments, authorities, men, and whereas millions of people from coast to coast will create a huge wave of prayer illustrating the unity of God's people for the circumstances facing us during this crucial time for our nation, and now therefore I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7, 2015, as a day of prayer in the City of Oshkosh. And I encourage our fellow citizens to join in prayer, seeking God's grace and asking Him to touch the minds and hearts of our people and our leaders so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice, dated April 28, 2015.
The national day of prayer has been something that's been going on for many years since 1775, the first Continental Congress called it, and it became formally established in 1952. In 1988, it was established as the first Thursday of every May would be the national day of prayer here in the United States. And we are having an event right here in Oshkosh in front of the city hall here, not this Thursday, but the following Thursday, which is May 7. If you have a chance, at 12 o'clock noon for 45 minutes, we will be having an event here and lifting up everyone in prayer for our city, our country, our nation, and thank you.
Our second proclamation, whereas every year on the 2nd Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food pantries, and whereas the letter carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the Pollock Drive was held in 1991, more than a billion pounds of food have been collected, and whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and commitment to their communities. All the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do proclaim Saturday, May 9, 2015, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day in the City of Oshkosh, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick up while delivering the mail, and together we can all help those in need, dated April 28, 2015.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Oshkosh. Like the mayor stated, it's the 9th of May. We'll be delivering cards Tuesday and Wednesday, bags Thursday and Friday. Please donate. We've collected over 900,000 pounds in the City of Oshkosh since 1994. Thank you very much.
Our third proclamation is a rather long one, but to a very large and well-deserving group. Whereas Oshkosh Wave Robotics is a family of K-12 STEM-based educational programs focused on engaging students through robotics and other inspiring platforms with over 200 participating student members, 36 varsity team members, 20 technical mentors, and countless supporters involving Oshkosh Elementary, Middle, and High Schools. And whereas Wave Robotics Team 2826 is part of the FIRST, which stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, a community with a mission to transform our culture by creating a world where science and technology are celebrated, where young people dream of becoming science and technology leaders. And whereas Wave Robotics won the 2015 Wisconsin Regional Competition and the 2015 Minnesota Regional Competition, and also won the Minnesota Regionals Chairman Award, the most prestigious award at FIRST, honoring the team that best represents a model for other teams to emulate and best embodies the purpose and goals of FIRST. And whereas over 2,900 teams across the country compete in the FIRST Robotics Program with Wave Robotics being one of the 600 teams advancing to the 2015 World Championships held in the Edward Jones Dome in St. Louis, Missouri, April 23 through 25. And whereas at the World Championship, Wave Robotics was awarded the coveted Excellence in Engineering Award for the top robot design, and with its alliance won the Hooper Division, the semifinals, and the quarterfinals, and finished second in the world among 600 teams, the farthest any team from Wisconsin has ever advanced in the World Championships. Now therefore, I, Steve Cummings, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 28, 2015, as Oshkosh Wave Robotics Day, and call upon the citizens of Oshkosh to congratulate Wave Robotics on this tremendous achievement dated April 28, 2015.
On behalf of our team, we would like to thank the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. It's been a great year.
Congratulations.
If you have homework or would like to go out and enjoy the nice weather, you're excused.
Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
And before we begin the presentation, there's a couple of guidelines I want to read. The first is, all applications were given to the council at our organizational meeting on Tuesday, April 21, 2015, and that the order for the presentations to the council was drawn by lot by the city clerk. Each candidate will make a presentation to the council. The limit is five minutes. Council members will ask any questions that they may have of the candidate. After all candidates have made their presentation, there will be an opportunity for public comment. Thereafter, the council will consider the appointment. Four votes for an individual are required for appointment. First will be Larry Lautenschlager.
I apologize ahead of time. I'm going to read most of my statement because that's the only way I can keep it under five minutes because otherwise I'll be going out on some tangents. Just so you know, I'll be reading my statement. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Larry Lautenschlager. I live at 1215 Carr Place. I've been a resident of Oshkosh all my life. I love the city and have many memories of my younger days in this city. I remember spending summers down in Menominee Park at the Light of Diamonds, watching baseball with my friends. I remember swimming in the Menominee Beach and Pollock Pool. I remember shopping on Friday nights with my parents because Friday nights, stores are open until 9 o'clock, so everybody's out shopping. I raised a family in this city. My two daughters went to the wonderful public schools and participated in the swim team at both YMCA's and later at Oshkosh North High School. As a family, we went sledding down Garbage Hill, and we went biking on the bike routes and did several picnics throughout the parks. I want to help Oshkosh residents create these memories and like these in the future. I have worked at Winnebago at the Health Institute for 33 years and plan on retiring this year. My job as a medical scheduler and transportation gives me an opportunity to take these residents and visit the local hospitals and several clinics on a daily basis. And while I'm in the waiting room, of course, I overhear from time to time people talking about the city, both positive and negative, so I kind of have a sense of what people think about Oshkosh. During those 33, 32 years, 33 years at Winnebago, 14 of those years I served as local union president representing 720 employees at both Winnebago and the Wisconsin Resource Center. During those 14 years, I negotiated seven local contracts and worked closely with both managements to resolve issues that came up between management and employees there. I also was fortunate enough to serve on the executive board and be part of negotiating six contracts for the Wisconsin State Employees Union and the State of Wisconsin, where I helped negotiate contract language and policies between state employees and the state of Wisconsin. And I'll tell you that, down in Madison, working with those state negotiators and legislators, that was a trip, that was a learning experience, I'll tell you that. I am currently in my second term as Winnebago County Supervisor, representing residents in the 19th District in the City of Oshkosh. I currently serve on several boards and committees as county board supervisor. I serve as vice chair of the Winnebago County Human Services Board. I also serve as secretary on the Parkview Healthcare Committee. I serve on the Fox Valley Workforce Development Board, the Avocap Executive Committee and Board of Directors, and the Lakeside Care District Family Care Board, and finally, on Oshkosh Area United Way. I've also attended several city boards and committees from time to time when I had a chance. Serving on the county board and negotiating state contracts has educated me to the ins and outs of both state and local government because I feel both have the same common concerns and interests. On the county board, right now, we have one supervisor that serves as a city council member, and we have also, we have several other supervisors that are either town board chairs or town board members. Because in today's economics and tight budgets and tight budgets in the city, the counties, and the townships, all need to work together. In the last few years, the city and the county have joined partners in several projects like the merging of the health departments, jointly buying property to create the Oshkosh Aviation Business Park, and now joining together with Winnebago County, City of Oshkosh, and the Oshkosh School Board to create an employee health clinic to help on raising health costs. Sitting through budgets and negotiations for both the state union and as a county board supervisor has given me some insight and knowledge from being on both sides of the table, so I am familiar with it, and I understand how that feels, and I understand the process and how it works. I'm also fortunate to live in a neighborhood that has a neighborhood association along with Mayor Cummings. I currently serve on the steering committee of the association, and I have been administrator of the neighborhood garden. I strongly believe in the neighborhood concept because I have seen what I've done to our neighborhoods and helps beautify the neighborhood, brought the neighbors close together, and creates and helps the city parks department help in maintaining Stevens Park. So I am glad to see that creating and sustaining the culture of neighborhoods in the city's 2015-2016 strategic plan. I have always been a level-headed person, a team player, a good listener, and ready to help on issues resolved. And to take a quote out of Councilwoman Pansky's campaign book is, "I might not have all the answers, but I'm willing to learn and I'm willing to listen." Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Mr. Lautenschlager?
I got a couple. Go ahead.
No, I'll defer to seniority. Years on the council, not age.
Mr. Lautenschlager, just a couple of questions real briefly. You mentioned you're on the county board. If you were appointed to the council, would you consider stepping down from the county board or staying the county board? And if so, do you view any conflicts of interest?
No, I think I can continue on the county board. I don't think there's conflict of interest. Like I said, I think the county and the city have some common concerns and goals, and like I say, one of them was the aviation plaza. I mean, the city council had a vote on it. It also came to the county board. The county board had a vote on it. So I would have knowledge of the issues on both sides. I don't really feel that there's a conflict of interest at all.
Okay. Council's adopted the city's strategic plan and its direction for the city, and that probably reviewed it a little bit. Do you agree that that's a great direction for the council to take, to use as a template to move the city forward?
I really do. I think the city's in the right direction, and I'm willing to help all I can, but reading the strategic plan, yes, I think it covers all the bases that we're looking at, from the, you know, economic development to the strength of the neighborhoods, to the infrastructure. I think infrastructure, roads, and that, we've still got a ways to go, but we're getting there. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lautenschlager, you happen to be the first person up here. I would ask all of the other candidates to address this specific question. We just had an election. You had a, it could have been a three out of, a one out, or basically, we were scrambling for candidates. And why is it that you chose to not run? Could you explain why you didn't run for council and now you want to be appointed? I mean, you had, basically, you could have had a three out of three or a three out of four shot, now you're looking at maybe a one out of seven or seven.
Right.
Please explain why you did not run for council.
And I was close. I was close to definitely running. I was gonna, I was gonna get papers, get the signatures, and I could have got that. I just wasn't sure at that time, at that time that this is what I wanted to do. You know, I was, I still got my full-time job. Now that I'm looking at retiring within the next few months or whatever, I think I'll have more time now to do city council duties besides my county board's. My retirement was a big factor on if I was gonna go for the city council or not. At that time, I wasn't thinking of retirement. Now I am. That's why I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the list is Kyle Clark.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and ask for an appointment to the Oshkosh Common Council. I believe I have the skills necessary to be successful as a common council member and be a great asset to our community. As I demonstrated when I was on council previously, I admit I have the education, organization, and preparation to succeed in this role. I've always prepared for the meetings, having understood and asked questions of staff before the meeting to be prepared to ask educated questions in this forum. I was an active participant in and out of the council chambers to ensure that the citizens of Oshkosh were well represented. I always viewed the role of an Oshkosh Common Council member as a steward of the taxpayers. The importance of understanding debt management and services, how to deliver services the most efficient way possible was core to my decision-making process. During my time on council, I also served as an issue advocate on behalf of the City of Oshkosh in Madison and in our community. There was a bill in the previous session of the legislature called, that was nicknamed the Frack Sand Mining Bill. During that bill, I served as a reference for my fellow council members to the issues at hand and was instrumental in getting a proclamation passed to influence our decision-makers in Madison, as well as going to Madison and testifying in the chambers of the legislature to make sure that the voice was in Madison to protect the multimillion dollar investment the city has made in our stormwater management. Also during my time on council, I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference. It's important to not rest on our laurels and to attend these conferences because there are other communities facing similar issues, and they may have innovative solutions that we may not have thought of already. I am committed to the city of Oshkosh. I am now focused on the Oshkosh Common Council. I have no other political agendas at this point, and the intergovernmental communication is important, and I intend to foster those relationships, but I would be focused on being a representative for the citizens of Oshkosh. During my time off the council, I have also worked to maintain my understanding of the operations of city government, spending time both in the clerk's office and with our city manager to understand how the policy decisions made at the council level affect the day-to-day operations of our government. As such, I understand the impact of our policy decisions, both on budget and our community. Having served in the council under the current economic conditions, I understand the importance of debt management and our strategic plan. Mr. Herman asked a question about the use of the strategic plan. It is a useful tool in decision-making. It is a lens by which we can make our decisions to continue moving the city forward in an important and constructive manner. The question that Mr. Peck answered is one that I actually had intended to address anyway. I did not run in the election in December because I had outstanding commitments that may have required me to remove myself from the City of Oshkosh. All of those commitments have been satisfied. As such, I am also committed to running in an election so that the citizens can have their voice. You are the elected representatives of those citizens. It's your choice tonight, but they deserve the right to ratify your vote. I look forward to continuing to work towards the city that is a great place to live, work, and play. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Council, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is Tracy Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor Cummings, members of the council, community leaders, and citizens. I'm also going to read from my notes just to make sure that I am mindful of the time constraints that we have been asked to adhere to. I'm Tracy Robertson, and I'm here tonight encouraging you to appoint me to the Common Council. I bring an eclectic blend of expertise in community organizing, community service, and small business. I have been in management in both before and nonprofit industries. I'm an entrepreneur, and for more than 20 years, I have provided startup business consulting services to individuals around the country. I'm a champion for small business and understand what it takes to attract them, to start them, to run them successfully, and to retain them. This expertise will come in handy as the council looks to improve the economic vibrancy of the business community in Oshkosh. That expertise of mine balances well with close to a decade of working in emergency management for a large city government organization that reported directly and worked closely with the mayor of one of the largest cities in the country. For close to four years now, I have spearheaded several social justice initiatives. A great deal of my social justice work has been around diversity and inclusion through a nonprofit organization that I started here called Fit Oshkosh. Oshkosh, like most of the nation, is becoming more diverse, and through this, and though this trend is slower in Oshkosh than in other places, I think my appointment would bring a different and often overlooked perspective to the decisions that we make as a city, which will allow us to not only tolerate diversity, but be proactive about the changes to come. And doing so contributes to our economic sustainability. It helps to position Oshkosh as a city of choice to millennials because studies have shown that the millennials want to live in places that are progressive and intentionally inclusive. Also in doing this work, I have had an opportunity to work collaboratively with city officials, some of which are in this room, with other faith leaders, with nonprofit leaders, with business owners, and other community thought leaders here in Oshkosh and throughout the valley. This has sometimes resulted in some hard-hitting conversations, and I feel confident in saying that though some of us have left the table on imposing size of an issue, I have earned the respect of many people in this community. I think the council and the community will benefit from these relationships as they will help to make an impact, help me to become an impactful council member. One testament to the impact that I have been able to make is that I was recently called upon to join an advisory council for a Wisconsin-wide research and advocacy organization in our state's capital. I know that my greatest contributions in Oshkosh are yet to come because through serving as a member of this council, I will assist in the collective effort of making Oshkosh a city of choice in the valley. I am excited about the future of Oshkosh, and I will continue to work towards this success. As a member of the council, I not only become a symbol to many about what's possible here, but I also bring a new and forward-thinking perspective while honoring the community, its values, and its mission. In response to the question that was asked as to why I did not run next year during the actual election period, I've been asked three years ago to run for council by some community people and declined. I didn't feel like that it was the right time for me to do that. I actually planned to run next year, and if I'm not appointed tonight, I'll be back.
Council, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. The city, or the council through the city staff uses tax increment financing districts as an economic driver. Do you believe that that's a positive direction and a direction the City of Oshkosh should continue to go?
I do. I am a native of Chicago. We had lots of TIF districts in the Chicagoland area, and I saw firsthand the positive impact that those opportunities provided to citizens of the Chicagoland area. So I'm excited to hear and help hopefully move forward that initiative here in Oshkosh.
Second, you've mentioned in your comments that you've been on other boards and things. City council members are on approximately 16 different boards. Do you think boards and commissions have an impact to making positive decisions to help the council members down the line?
I'd like to think so. I certainly think that the ideas that come from boards and committees tend to be very inclusive, tend to think, bring in a lot of different perspectives, and I think it's important that members of council be involved in those committees and participate in boards so that they can have the ear of all citizens.
One question I didn't ask from Mr. One question I didn't ask from Mr. Alentzer or Mr. Clark, but it's kind of out there. We roughly spend roughly 600 hours a year between council meetings, boards, commissions, events, and activities. Does your work schedule allow you to have flexibility to attend quite a few functions and events?
It does. I'm the executive director of Fit Oshkosh. I have a very strong staff. I personally handpicked my board. I also have a very strong board, and I believe that they will be able to afford me an opportunity to be involved in the council in every way that would become necessary.
One, and I know the county board does it, but we're looking at spending one or two full eight-hour days in budget deliberations. Would that pose any problems for you?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Next is Harold Buchholz.
Counsel, Harold Buchholz, 1165 Algoma. Just to maybe start with Mr. Peck's question about why I didn't run in the last election. I did retire in 2014, but I still had business commitments that lasted through to the early part of this year, so my time wasn't there. Now that I am retired, I have all the time. My passion and energy have always been to serve. Now I have the time to do that as well. So I think that's my explanation as to why I didn't run. I also am going to approach this a little differently because all of you, I think, received our qualifications, our applications and everything. And Mr. Herman kind of opened the door there with the strategic plan for me a little bit, which is the way I was going to come at this. I'd just start with the fifth goal of the strategic plan, which is to develop an effective high-performance government. And I think we would all agree that in order to do that, one would need to know how, how do you do it, and what's involved in becoming a high-performing government. So that's kind of how I'm going to approach this here. And I'm going to draw upon two of my resume items to bring that in. This is the top part here.
It's on.
It's on.
So one of my qualifications was that I was a Wisconsin Forward Award Examiner. In that capacity, I was trained in the seven Baldrich criteria.
Your pen.
Sorry about that. I meant to put it right. So I was trained in the seven criteria, the Baldrich criteria. And then as a small team of five, six people, we were assigned to a large national company and asked to evaluate them and analyze them in terms of their position and their development in excellent corporation, excellent organization. And so taking those criteria and evaluating them over a five or six-week period, we then came up with determination as to what level of high performance they actually achieved and then gave them the feedback of that so that if they did meet certain criteria that award status, that they would be awarded some value of an award. So with that, I've used the Baldrich quality criteria in pretty much everything I've done, all my business that I've done, all the managing that I've done, and I've been managing kind of since I've been a little guy, in all the industries, retail, manufacturing, distribution, food service. And I find them very valuable for that, for that purpose. And again, I draw back to our fifth goal of achieving an effective, high-performing government. The other item in my experience level is having been a continuous improvement specialist for the state of Wisconsin. And again, in that capacity, I was trained by the Department of Commerce in the state of Wisconsin in organizational and company assessment. So I performed a lot of company assessments over my time using the best practices in industry as a guideline and also the Baldrich criteria. Then I also trained both management employees in strategic planning, team development, software selection, everything and anything that would make that company more competitive. That was the whole goal. That's the whole goal of that particular program. It's called the WMEP. So not only did I work with a lot of Wisconsin companies, I also worked with several Oshkosh companies in that regard. And not only did I train and help develop those individuals in that organization, but also as part of the implementation. So it wasn't just, it wasn't just a matter of talking and showing people what to do. I actually put myself in the lead position of implementation, make sure that outcomes were derived. And I guess got the signal that my time is already running up. So the last part of that will be talking about the strategic plan. This is the current plan, the current strategic plan. There's five major goals. And then this was the plan, the city's actually first strategic plan, 2009, 2010, which I was a part of when I was on the council. The interesting note in that is, and I could go on quite a bit more, is that the first four goals are definitely identical. The only difference was the development of an effective government and that we covered in this particular strategic plan under the city manager's goals. So I apologize for taking a little longer here. Am I still within time?
Wrap up.
I'm getting there. So I really like to be a part of what I'm seeing. And what I'm seeing is an alignment over these years. Years have passed by and things have gone on and the city has progressed and certainly we're in the right direction. And I like to be a part of that with the background that I have to continue that progress It is, it would really, it would really honor me to be serving again because I really have some goals, some additional goals that maybe I didn't have in my 2009, 2010 term to get out more into the community. Now I have that time, and that's not to say I didn't devote a lot of time when I was on the council. It's just once you have this retirement thing going for you, it opens up a lot more time. And I know how much time each one of you puts into this, so I'm ready to serve in that regard and hopefully you feel that I'm the person to do that. So with that, thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions from the council?
Just one question. Mr. Buchholz, in your previous appointment, you had indicated when you were appointed that you were only going to serve the one year out of that term.
Yes.
Will you be serving this year term and then stepping back up to the plate or?
I will be stepping up to the plate. Yep, I made that commitment. I do make that in public that I will run.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have notes, so let's wait for a second. I am candidate number five, also known as Gary Gray. Most people read, watch, or listen to sports events, which is fine. However, I'm a little bit different in that one of my hobbies is my interest in American political, small P, history, including local city governments. The first meeting I attended when I first moved to Oshkosh was a common council meeting. Since that time, I have attended many council meetings. At some of those meetings, I have spoke on various topics, including budgeting, economic development, neighborhood association recognition policy, capital improvement plan policy. I also attended several long-range finance committee meetings. Many, I mean, I made some comments at some of those meetings. I am currently a member of the Plan Commission. Last fall, I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference, which, as you folks know, discusses various city issues. Back in December, I tried to get enough signatures to get on the spring 2015 ballot as a candidate to the common council, but unfortunately, I didn't succeed in getting the required number. I am seeking a position on the common council to be able to work with other council members to promote the interest and general welfare of the city and the general well-being of its residents. I believe I have the ability to provide a unique viewpoint in analyzing and discussing various issues facing the city of Oshkosh, including financial issues, providing the necessary and adequate services to the public, and providing the best possible use of cities' limited resources. My qualifications include participation on the Oshkosh Plan Commission, having a financial accounting background, including a master's of arts degree in accounting and CPA certificate. I understand the local government budgeting. I have insight in general local governmental operations and activities, an aptitude to bring various aspects or viewpoints to issues, the ability to spend time to understand various and complex issues. And finally, I believe I have the skill to work with others to achieve solutions to various complex issues. Another recommendation for me was submitted by Mr. Cat Wagner, who is currently an alderman in the city of Frostfield, which gives council members another viewpoint of my qualifications and abilities. If appointed to the council, I believe my two priorities would be, one, promoting existing and developing new programs and policies for affordable low and middle-income housing, and two, work on revenue enhancements which are fair and reasonable. And I would like to end with a simple illustration. From time to time, when people cook, they put seasoning on food to make the food better. I believe if appointed to the council, I would provide the seasoning to make the activities as council better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Does the council have any question?
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Gary, you mentioned that you had attempted to get the signatures to be on the ballot for this previous election. Is that something that you would try again to do if you are appointed to this to seek reelection in the next election?
The strict answer, the strict, I guess, why I would, how I would answer this is, I don't know, frankly. I would see what happens between now and October, November. And I would tell you, by the middle of December, at least, by the first Tuesday of January of 2016, everybody would know whether or not I would be running.
Thank you.
Do you feel that the, excuse me, the city's strategic plan is a good roadmap for the city? And is there anything in the strategic plan that you would want to change?
I think, I think the city, city government has various tools or instruments, documentations that are very useful in achieving the goals and objectives of city government. The strategic plan is, is one of those documents. I think there are some good elements to the strategic plan. I'm not sure if I want to really specify which ones by the fact that if, frankly, if I do, I would be saying that perhaps you folks made a mistake and I don't think there is, I don't think this isn't made by government officials necessarily are mistakes, even if they are different than other people's opinions.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Brian Schultz.
Good evening. About three, five years ago, I can't remember exactly when it was, this council decided to have a long-range finance committee and put that out. And I was the first applicant to be applying for the long-range finance committee and have been there since it was started. We've had some good times and we've had some interesting times. People, I don't see anybody here that was there when we started, but we've continued on. Some of the things that we worked with was the fee policy, came a recommendation for that, how to deal with the dollars that are left after the TIFs projects, budgeting process. We resolved that in many ways. We helped along with that. The last one that we were working on for the last couple of months was the CIP process or recommendations, what we'll have now come up shortly to the council. In the closing of the TIFs, it was the good discussion of finding out that we really should keep that money in economic development. So it went back and forth, back and forth, and so we in no way are saying that we are taking credit for the GOEDC, but we did have a part in that. And it was the council that picked up the ball and ran with it and said, yeah, we're going to put the money behind GOEDC and we're going to stay there. Council Peck was the one that presented that. So it's been good. I have also been on the school board budget reconciliation committee for the past three years. When you get cuts, you have to make a decision what type of programs will go, what won't. And it's been an interesting thing. I think I probably one of the few that's been on there for three years, keep asking it back. I hope we don't have another one. I hope they get their funding so we don't have to have that again. Why would I want to be on the council? Well, the main thing is basically I've been on the policy side, trying to work out policy, recommending policy. Next best thing is now that we've got a good rock rolling down the hill, I think there's been significant changes, good, good changes in the city and in the council. Now we need to make sure we concentrate on the implementation and keep developing how we implement the policies and make sure we keep them coordinated and working together. That's what the council does. The other thing is there'll be some budget problems coming down that I don't think people are aware of. For the last three years, the city has raised their tax rate. The school board is lower there, county laws there, Fox Valley was taken off the tax bill. And it sort of appeared for three years, the taxes weren't raised, but in fact, the city's taxes were raised, as compensated by other things. When people got their tax bill, it looked like nothing happened. That's not going to happen again. So the city, the school board said, we're going to be taxing quite a bit. So we're going to be looking at some serious issues in a tax and tax levying situation. In the long-range finance, what I tried to be is a person that was the education and communications person, a teacher. It's very important that people know what the city is doing. They need to know why you've got these policies. They have to know why you refinance. And I think that the city council should be tooting their horn a lot more than they do. You refinance your long-term debt, you come out several million dollars ahead, people should know that because they certainly know it when you raise taxes. There's other things that you can get, some good refa, some good reflection. A lot of people worked hard for a long time to get the community, community education, community attitude turned around. Want to be a part of that. Hope a lot of other things go. I hope GOEDC takes off, does a fantastic job. Fantastic. And so that's basically why I'd like to be on the council. So why did I run, not run? I did. I ran a couple of years ago, I think it was as a write-in. At that time, we had nine candidates. And now we have an appointment, we have 10 candidates. One last thing. This year, we had three slots and there were three candidates. We've got to look at that. What's wrong with this picture? How come? How come we're not getting our candidates? Myself, it was just a late decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Schultz? Thank you. Next is Mike Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Colonel. Mike Norton, 1029 South Main Street in Oshkosh. First and foremost, my qualifications. I think my 15 years on the county board serves one thing, but as part of that county board and other things, I've been involved in many committees and boards that range from parking recreation to transportation to physical facilities. But the reason I want to be on this council is because I, to increase the business activity. And the reason, and why business activity, because Bill Clinton says the best educational policy, the best family policy is a sound economy. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I went to La Crosse for a conference, and I looked out and I saw they're very impressive downtown, and I would like to see how we can get a downtown like that, not just being tourism for a day or so, or as Torquay's, the mayor talked to his campaign, but for three, four days and more and more of that, because that will spur economic activity downtown. I also, like I have said, when I applied for this position a couple of years ago, when I ran for it about 10 years ago, economic activity, business, and otherwise, I look at my district, we have lost, and no fault of the city, we've lost good-paying jobs at Buckstaff and Morgans. We have to find a way to incorporate and get some more of that back somehow, some way. And the reason, this is important to me, because I have come to the conclusion that what I can do on the city council can help what I do on the Winnemaw County Board. On Winnemaw County Board, I serve on a number of social services, health board, housing authority, human services. By having a thriving economy, not only does it help the people in those situations, but also can help alleviate those situations, and that's why I want to be on the city council. As a county board member, I'm very limited, as Supervisor Peck knows. I can help, and I did support the buying and selling of land for the aviation industrial park, or we have a revolving loan that, which I think the city is now getting a part of. Other than that, I can't do much. I want to do more, because as a city council member, I can help what I'm serving on and do as a county board member. And I wanted to make this city take chance, not necessarily chance, but be a leader. Me and Chupanak read something this past week, and Appleton thinks they always have to be first in things. Why do they have to always be first in things? I read in Wisconsin Business Magazine that Appleton and Green Bay is ranked 20th as the most livable or safeable place. I would like to see how we can be up in those charts. To answer your question, Councilman Peck, why I didn't run, I guess, basically politics. I mean, I looked at the people who were running, and I said, this is not the time for me to run. I ran before, like I say, 10 years ago, I ran with 15 candidates, I applied to get them. You know, one thing in common, both times we were open seats, and that's why I ran. Would I run again? I would run again if I was appointed to this position, and that is why I didn't run, and why, if you want to know if I'd run again, I would run again, put my name out there. So, and to answer your question, I think the council plan is a good template and look at and use as a guide, and I could say, I really want to see the city grow, because like I say, one thing I do as a city council member can help what I do as a county board member.
Questions?
Mr. Norton, would you intend to stay on as a county board supervisor and a council member as well?
Yes, I would serve on both. You know, Supervisor Arnold, Councilmember Herman asked, with time, there are a couple committees and boards that I serve on, which I probably would not serve on, one I won't because it meets the same time you do, that you're voluntary, but I would serve on both.
Any other questions from the council? Peck?
Thank you. Mr. Norton, you indicate you want to increase business activity and spur economic development. I mean, may I pose the question? This council spent significant amount of time getting GOEDC going. Myself and Ms. Osby were instrumental in getting the long-range finance committee and the revolving loan fund. You know, not to toot our own horn, but I believe we've done quite a bit to set the stage for economic development. What is it that you would do in addition to, you know, in essence, apparently we haven't done enough? What are the ideas that you would bring to this to spur economic development?
I don't know if you've done enough. I think you should try to look at ways to do more.
What would they be?
Well, that's what we have to investigate and look at. I don't know if we've, you know...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Norton. And now Reginald Parsons.
Reginald Parsons, 654 Amherst Avenue. Mr. Mayor and members of the common council, I would like to thank you for allowing me to come before you. I was raised, I was born and raised on the south side of Chicago, and yes, I'm a Bears fan, so the cat's out of the bag. I have lived in the city of Oshkosh since August of 2013. I have a bachelor's degree in homeland security with two minors in criminal justice and pre-law from American University, and was the student commencement speaker when I graduated in May of 2013. Currently, I'm a graduate student at UW Oshkosh in public administration. I have been a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of Oshkosh since August of 2014. I've served as an intern at the day-by-day warming shelter. I've worked on the Oshkosh citizens' surveys in 2014 and 2015. Currently, I'm a member of the UW Oshkosh Strategic Planning Committee and a former member of the Chance of Search and Screen Committee. And also led the efforts on voter education in the 2014 general election and the 2015 spring elections with the city clerk's office. And I also served as an election observer in that 2014 general election. The questions before those that are seeking to serve on the common council is why they would like to serve. Well, I truly believe in public service, and I believe it's my calling and something I look forward to devote my life to. I believe people should serve in their community, and I honestly believe this is a great community to live in the Fox Valley. And the value system too of Oshkosh and how citizens actively participate in citizen engagement with local government is amazing. For example, as a member of the Board of Appeals, we're dealing with the situation that they were appealing to have a second rent to the front of a home for a residential facility. Time and time again, I saw the same people attending meetings to either voice their concerns or opposition, or support or opposition to this measure. And I never saw this in Chicago, and it was something that was truly great to see. And I also believe in the strategic plan set by the common council, and believe it's a document that provides the framework for being bold, innovative, and to think about where we would like to see Oshkosh in a year, five years, 10 years, et cetera. And I want to advance that strategic plan. I have highlighted some things I would like to work with the council on, and one of them is infrastructure. The capital improvement plan for 2015-19 is essential to meet our goals of improving and maintaining our infrastructure, as indicated in the strategic plan. And if selected, I would like to work with the council on improving our stormwater and flood management, to make sure that a 20-minute downpour in the summer does not result in an entire street being blocked off. And one example was, not too long ago, there was an individual that was on crutches, and it was a heavy downpour. I don't know if I remember that day, because it was off and on raining, and the street was flooded, and that person had to walk in the street to get to a dry location. And that's something that is a safety hazard and concerning to me, and would love to work with the city management and public works to identify those areas that will help solve our stormwater infrastructure problems. Zoning and rental enforcement, I know the new draft of the zoning ordinances are being worked on right now, but my experience on the zoning board, I will be not only help to enforce those ordinances while ensuring that residential, commercial, and economic developments continue to grow. Education of the new zoning ordinances is also key to insurance assess in this area. I would also like to get involved in looking at rental practices in the city and look at areas where it can be improved to ensure fairness with the tenants and prospective renters. Budgeting, as crazy as it sounds, I do honestly love budgeting and have a deep understanding of public budgeting, and I had the opportunity to be part of a allocations committee that this year nearly appropriated a million dollars, so that was good to see. And with the help of the council and crafting this budget for 2016, look at how we can invest in other areas while shrinking our debt service. And I know in this year's budget, 27% accounted for paying back debt, and that was higher than the previous year in 2014, and I would like to work with the council to see what areas we can grow, other areas while shrinking our debt service. And finally, community policing efforts, I want to give credit to the Oshkosh Police Department and Chief Grohl for their commitment to community outreach in the minority population in the city. Just today, just a few minutes ago, I left a conversation I initiated about career opportunities for minorities in the Oshkosh Police Department, and also having an open conversation about how they feel locally in the community. And that's something that I want to continue to move forward if selected on the council, and I will regardless if I'm not selected on the council, but, and something in the fall that I look forward to doing. And if selected, I will be walking on the floors of City Hall tomorrow to talk to various departments and understand how they work, how they operate, and continue to move Oshkosh in a positive direction. It is already moving. And to answer the question of why I didn't run, because I was busy serving others in terms of the voter education, and when this opportunity opened up, I figured, how can I serve a greater capacity? So with that, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. Council question?
It looks as if you graduate from UW Oshkosh with your masters in May of 2016.
Yes.
Do you know what your plans are beyond that?
Yes, I do plan on staying in Wisconsin. As of right now, I don't know what the long-term, I do want to stay in Wisconsin, so, but I know by the end of the year, I know where, I should know by the end of 2015, what the next step is, regardless of work or continued education.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Parsons, your credentials are outstanding, and your involvement in the university campus is also outstanding. Just a question I have a little bit on, I asked earlier on a couple of questions. Tax increment financing, the city uses that as an economic driver for developments and things like that. Do you support that type of use of that money and using it to develop future developments throughout Oshkosh?
Yes, I believe it is an incentive, and it's for businesses that did not think about Oshkosh originally, to maybe consider thinking about it. And with the TIF, it'll be more of an incentive to develop, because this is honestly a great community. And coming from Chicago, I came from a top city of almost close to 3 million people, and saw that economic development, but I now know that smaller towns can do the same thing, and if sometimes better, because of less population, and it's more kind of lean in that way. So yes, I do believe in the TIF.
You're obviously familiar with the state budget and how some of those things work and how it affects our budget. What are your feels on revenue sharing and things like that coming from Madison to Oshkosh, and the lack of the revenue sharing that we're starting to see?
Well, I'm realistic in the fact that I know that state, more state money is not going to come. And I wish that some governments had, the state did allow more local government control, because some local governments do know what's best for their city and/or their town or their village. And I know that debt is another big thing, and I know that looking at revenue coming from Madison is a way to kind of cushion that in some areas, and coming from a state that is crippled with debt, local governments, it's even worse, and it's harder to get out of. So, and yeah, I do wish that more local governments had that local control in terms of revenue sharing out, being dependent on the state.
Okay, thank you.
You referenced improving infrastructure and freeing up monies that are presently going to debt for operations. Currently, we are, the city's pretty much at our, you know, we're at a limit for our borrowing, but we still need to continue with our infrastructure improvements. And we have a plan in place to continue that, but to begin the glide slope down. Similar to the question that I asked Mr. Norton related to economic development, what are your ideas to be able to try and continue improving infrastructure, subject to the fact that we have these debt limitations, we have these revenue limitations that come to us, whether it be from Madison or whatever? But how, what, do you have any ideas specifically?
In terms of economic development or improvement?
Well, is related, improving infrastructure, subject to the constraints that we currently have?
Well, I do know that infrastructure is key, and I know that a lot of businesses, we have big agriculture manufacturing state, and I know that a lot of the companies use the big trucks, and, you know, the roads get beat up as a result of that. But I know that the city does need to invest in that, and I know that a will tax was an option. I know in the city of Oshkosh survey, and being part of that, seeing the data firsthand in that report will be coming to the council pretty soon. There's overwhelmingly opposition to a will tax, because of, probably hearing the word "tax." But economic development, we can look at areas small. I mean, obviously, we can think big, but if we can bring businesses slowly, in terms of maybe more of the minority population, because I know that's an area that the city is working on, and I'm glad that they're working on it, bringing more businesses that attract minorities in that economic development, and that'd be more of an incentive for the city to also, and we still are, but looking at other areas to improve our infrastructure so we can have a smoother transition.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank all eight candidates for their presentations. At this point, we will open it for any comments from the public regarding any of the candidates. If there are no questions or comments from the floor, it is now time for the council to discuss the eight candidates.
Well, just to start out, I thank all of the eight candidates for applying and coming before us tonight. I have to say that there are some extremely qualified candidates here, and this is going to be a difficult decision to make. That said, one of the things that, when I look at all of this, is one of the things that pops out to me is past actions are indicative of future performance. And so I've looked at the various resumes, and there's some, like I said, there's some highly qualified ones, and there's some that step beyond that. So it's going to be a hard decision. I am a little concerned about some of the answers to the why you didn't run, especially the one related to time. You know, we, all of us here have jobs. Well, unfortunately, as of a month ago, I lost my job, but prior to that, I mean, I not only had a full-time job, but I also had this along with all of the other commitments that I make. And if you're truly passionate about something and want to do something, you will make the time to do it. None of us that sit up here have 27 hours in a day. We all have 24 hours, as everyone else does. So that is of a particular concern of mine. So with that, I'll defer to any other council members.
I guess to piggyback off of Councilor Peck, you know, I think for any candidate that's stepping forward, I think, you know, Mr. Bokholt would certainly, you know, could attest to the time that it does take on council, and especially, you know, somebody like myself or Ms. Pansky, you know, there are times when there really is no time, pure exhaustion. Sometimes, I'm the co-founder of the Osby household, you know, as well as a mom. I've run my own business, and now I run my own practice. And, you know, when you're a part of council, typically, it's not just the boards and commissions that you serve on, the workshops or the council meetings. I have been asked to do a number of things in the Fox Valley to speak on behalf of, say, a female in, you know, a policymaking decision or things of that nature, participated in Girl Scouts and a number of things. So it's certainly not just the boards, commissions, workshops... So, it's certainly not just the boards, commissions, workshops, and council. In my four years on council, we've had a number of workshops. There's been a lot of critical issues. A couple of applicants had certainly noted budget issues. Every year was supposed to be easier than the last, I've not found that to be true. And moving forward, you know, I do think it is going to get tougher. I think the other thing, you know, that I look for, and in some of the applicants, I've had the pleasure of serving on some other, in some other capacity with them, but one of the biggest things is how folks deal with conflict resolution. I can tell you, there's a number of times, being on council, I've left a meeting, or we've had a list of, you know, agenda items that we've had to cover, in which I've been highly disappointed, or frustrated, or angered by my fellow council members, or even, you know, sometimes perhaps staff. But it's one of those things that you can't have a hangover on the issues, you have to immediately get over it and get on to the next thing, you know, and, you know, that is certainly something I think about as I go through the applicants. Unfortunately, there's a couple I haven't had the pleasure to work with, to know how they handle conflict, and to know if, you know, at the end of the day, or the end of the item, or the end of the meeting, if you can walk away and agree to disagree. So that's certainly something I'll be keeping in mind as we go through this process.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. We're fortunate, it's a tough decision, we have very qualified candidates. Obviously, some of you already have held office, some of you have been in office, so you already know the obligations that it takes to do this job. A few of you have not, but you've served on boards or commissions for the city of Oshkosh, so again, you know the importance of how council looks at boards and commissions, and you know how that works. So the learning curves for all of you would be very short, because you're already involved in the community, involved in a lot of boards and commissions for the city of Oshkosh. So, that being said, I guess I would, I've not served with some of you on some of the boards and commissions, or, but I've been at a lot of events with a lot of you there, and we've had a lot of great conversation, and I think that myself, I would have no issues working with any one of you, as we move through the process of the budget coming up, and further issues coming forward, as Mr. Schultz talked about the TIF policy, and some of the other policies that'll be coming out of long-range finance. So that being said, it's going to be a very tough call, and I know some of you have already talked about running next year, and that'd be great. Love to have as many candidates as possible, get our opinions, and few points out there in the community, and let the community make those decisions of who they think would best represent the council, because this is a hard way to do it. I personally, I'll say it, I would like to rather see a runoff election, and let the citizens make that decision than the six of us, because someone is going to get hurt feeling, someone's going to feel bad, and maybe when it's 66,000 people making that decision versus six, it's a little easier to maybe take a loss, or whatever. So hopefully, you'll reconsider if you don't get appointed today, or if you get appointed, and take out nomination papers next year. So, thank you.
I will just reinforce what my colleagues have said, I mean, this is a major commitment to time, both to, starting with the nomination papers, and shall we say, not the best time of year to be knocking on doors.
No, especially this December was not fun.
But it takes a major commitment just to start the process, nomination papers, it takes the time to go through the process, interviews, and so forth. This is not the first time this has happened, I've been in this situation maybe five or six years ago, and as Mr. Herman said, we would rather have the citizens of Oshkosh elect their city council, rather than us do it. I think we all share the concern that, why didn't you take out nomination papers in December? And our concern is, we don't want to be back in this position a year from now, having to select a person to, that didn't have the commitment initially, but now we are in this position of us making the decision for the citizens of Oshkosh. You know, we've got eight very good candidates, and will be a tough, tough decision, but we do have to make the decision. And for the seven of you that are not selected, we really encourage you to run for office a year from, well, a year from April, but, you know, there's a lot of good candidates out there, you have a lot of good community involvement, and I think that's what we need on this council. And we look at ourselves as a well-functioning team, with city staff and so forth. I think that's why you've seen the positive direction the city is going, the strategic plan, even shorter meetings, because we're voting to really enforce reinforcement of a strategic plan, so there's not a lot of debate and so forth. With that, I think we've come to the end of our discussion, unless anyone has any questions of any of the candidates, or any other comments in general. I believe the city clerk now will...
Do, would you like to take a poll?
Do we need resolution on the floor first?
He's going to take a poll?
Poll.
Process of elimination?
I think that would be, yes. We all agree that the poll would be the best way to go.
Choosing our first choice at this point?
Yes. And the candidate will have to have four out of the six. I guess, now we're naming our first candidate, our first preference.
Correct. Allison Osby? Not fair. Sorry.
Can she pass?
No. Then that makes me first. This is alpha sequence. Except...
So, okay, let, so let me clarify, because if I remember when we went through this process a few years back, we had process of elimination, so do we only get to choose one, or do we get to choose more than one? And then eliminate from there? I, we did a process of elimination, if I remember correctly, a couple of years ago, or was it because we had different, fewer?
Fewer candidates.
Was it fewer? It's up to you.
I believe we all give our first choice.
Yeah, and then based on that, there was a determination that if there were applicants that did not receive any votes at all, that they were eliminated at that point, and then if there was no plurality, then the ones that, let's say that we do this, and that there ends up being three candidates with two votes each, then we would poll that again until the young gentleman in the blue.
I was looking at our notes in our office from last time, and the way you did it last time, everyone, the clerk polled the council, your first choice, if the same name comes up four, at least four times, then it stops. If you don't have, or someone does not have four votes, the top two votes stay, everyone else is eliminated, and then you poll again.
So if we have three people, two, as you said, or two or three, then we go through it again? Correct?
Okay. I just want to make sure we all understood the process.
All right.
To Counselor Peck's point, there's a, there's a number of excellent candidates that came forward, and there's three specifically that I have in mind, but if I can only choose one, I would select Kyle Clark. Herman? Pansky?
Based on the fact that this was a clear goal for him regarding the previous election, I would nominate Gary Gray.
As I indicated, past actions are indicative of future performance, I as well have three candidates. But when I look at that, I have to, is, it's a very difficult decision, but Kyle Clark.
Stepanik?
Reginald Parson.
Kyle Clark.
Okay, Clark has four, Gray one, Parson one. So if we would like to move the resolution?
So are we, are you looking?
Resolution 15 dash 201, appointment of individual to fill vacant council seat.
I would move for the approval of Resolution 15 dash 201. Is there a second?
Second.
And at that, at this point, do I offer an amendment to fill in the blank?
Correct.
So then I would offer an amendment to fill in the blank in the last paragraph, in the now therefore be it resolved paragraph, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Oshkosh, that Kyle Clark is hereby appointed to fill the remaining term of council member Steve Cummings, which will expire in April of 2016.
Need a second?
Second.
Would you like to take the vote?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carry six.
Now, Mr. Clark now assumes his...
He gets one.
Yes, he should come up, and then I will swear him in. Do you swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, along with the ordinance of the city of Oshkosh, and will faithfully discharge duties of council member?
I do.
Six. You don't get to keep it though. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, could I ask for a five-minute recess for council to just chat with the other candidates, and also just take a little break before we move on to the business at hand?
Why don't we get back at 7:30?
All right. All right, 7:30. And again, I thank all the candidates that applied, I mean, like I said, there were very eminently qualified candidates. Please, come back again.
And we encourage you to run. But the citizens of Oshkosh select you.
Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area, simulcast on 101.9 FM W O C T, and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area, simulcast on 101.9 FM W O C T, and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area, simulcast on 101.9 FM W O C T, and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area, simulcast on 101.9 FM W O C T, and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. For broadcast times of local government meetings, check our website at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. You're watching City Cable 10, your source for government programming in the Oshkosh area. Simulcast on 101.9 FM WOCT and streamed on the world wide web at oshkoshcommunitymedia.org. Please stay tuned for continued coverage.
It's now time for citizen statements to the council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda. Limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh and the Common Council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or any other electioneering. Anyone that wants to come forward. We'll need your name and address, please.
Mike Norton, 1029 South Main Street, Oshkosh. What I'm handing you is a personal invite. You might have got one in the mail. As far as you know, I'm a member of the Health Board and part of the Health Board is Rethink. And we have in their annual Rethink Legislative Breakfast, as you see, Friday, May 15, 2015. We invite state legislators. We also invite all my county board supervisors. We also invite local officials, meaning city councilmember and school board members. And at this breakfast, you get a short breakfast at 7:15 and then the program will start and you'll hear various details of what we think is and also some suggestions on what maybe to improve the healthy outcomes of our neighborhood or of our community. Also, kind of on a sideline, one of the committees that I serve on, as part of Rethink, is substance abuse. And I know I've reached out to a few of you. At some time, we have a committee meeting, we like to reach out and maybe you come to our meeting and we could have a, just a general discussion on policies because one of the goals we have is having the same type of policies in each community. For example, Windermere County has a social host policy and some places don't. But we did a general discussion on that and we meet the third Thursday of every month in the Cogged Building at 1:30. You can contact myself or Heidi Keating from Rethink and we'd like to begin a dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen statements? Now, we're at the point of the agenda where it's consent agenda items. These items are a routine administration, administrative of nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from this consent agenda for discussion. First is approval of bills by Finance Director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from February 5 and March 5, 2015. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from April 14 and April 21, 2015. Oshkosh Board of Canvas filing of the official statement of votes cast for the April 7, 2015 election for Oshkosh Mayor declaring Steve Cummings as elected and for Oshkosh Common Council declaring Deb Allison Osby, Tom Peck, and Benjamin Stepanik as elected. Resolution 15202, approve dissolving tax increment District Number 9, Washburn Street.
My name's Gary Gray, 815 West Lynwood. I have a couple of questions. The first question is, it was mentioned in memo that the last year was used for the Healthy Neighborhoods initiative. I was wondering roughly how many dollars were involved with that?
You're talking Resolution 15202?
Yeah, yes.
I don't have the exact amount, but I think Mr. Davis had gathered some preliminary numbers based on previous years.
Hi, our estimate from the budget was about $930,000 from the budget from last year.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, if you may stay there, I got a couple of questions.
I have one more question in regards to this resolution. Was any consideration being given to make TIF Number 9 a donor TIF as opposed to closing it off?
There was no, well, we had a lot of discussions about how to do it, but TIF Number 7 has been our primary donor TIF. And you may recall that there was a discussion a couple of years ago about potentially using TIF 9 money for a trail along Washburn. And the council, after getting a lot of input from the public, decided against doing that. So while we could have done that, we decided that strategically we needed to return some of those monies because we're essentially going to be using all of TIF 7's funds for donor TIF purposes. And so we wanted to have some return on the investment that the county and the school board and the technical college made. And so we decided that TIFs 8, 9, and 6 were to be closed. And that would get each of those, the school district and the county and the city, about $2.5 to $3 million. You may recall, the school district, that's what they're using to fund Lakeside School. We're using it to fund our revolving loan fund. I'm not sure what the college or the technical college, I don't know if they've made any big announcement, but school district and the city have both invested their funds with, as these things are closing. Hope that's satisfactory.
Resolution 15203, approve preliminary plot for Bristol Square subdivision. Plan Commission recommends approval. Resolution 15204, approve initial resolution authorizing not exceeding $19,485,000 general obligation bonds of the City of Oshkosh. Resolution 15205, resolution directing the advertisement and sale of approximately $19,485,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation corporate purpose bond Series 2015-A, approximately $4,345,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2015-B, approximately $15,560,000 aggregate principal amount of stormwater utility revenue bonds, Series 2015, approximately $7,080,000 sewer system revenue bonds, Series 2015, and approximately $7,60,000 water system revenue bonds, Series 2015, of the City of Oshkosh, Windermere County, Wisconsin.
Mr. Mayor, a question. Part of this resolution includes refunding bonds. And I was wondering if there was any estimate on how many bonus points are going to be saved by refunding the bonds?
Todd Taves from Ellers Associates is here this evening. And if you have any questions?
I'd direct this to, before Mr. Taves and Ms. Larson come up, I have a note that I'll be pulling these two for separate consideration. Can we move forward and then address all the questions at that time when we consider them? Are we, is that...
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay. So you...
You might want to just grab a seat and grab a seat right up front.
You're still getting asked.
Yeah, don't go too far away.
You'll do that after. Resolution 15-206, amend 2015 capital improvement program to increase available project funds for sidewalk rehabilitation and reconstruction and parking lot improvements and approve fund transfer in the amount of $1,290,000. Resolution 15207, approval of amendment to agreement for engineering services with AECom Technical Services, Inc., for the design of the Snell Road sanitary sewer pump Resolution 15208, authorize renewal of agreement to provide personnel to the State of Wisconsin structural collapse team. Resolution 15209, approval of purchase of wetland mitigation credits for the 9th and Washburn area stormwater detention basin from Wisconsin Wetland Conservation Trust, Approval of initial resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals, various locations. Resolution 15211, approval of initial resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals, various locations with signed waivers. Resolution 15-212, approval of acceptance of waivers of special assessment notices and hearings, storm sewer laterals, various locations. Resolution 15213, approval of final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals, various location with signed waivers. Resolution 15-214, approve releasing easements east side of the 4300 block of Jackson Street, south of Jack Tower and Soda Creek roads. Resolution 15-215, approve accepting easements east side of the 4300 block of Jackson Street, south of Jack Tower and Soda Creek roads. Resolution 15-216, approve development agreement and waiver of special assessment proceedings for construction of Soda Creek Road, Jack Tower Road, and median improvements on Jackson Street. Resolution 15-217, approval of initial resolution, utilities, sidewalk, grading and gravelling, concrete paving, Soda Creek Road, Jack Tower Road. Accept and approve waiver of special assessment notices and hearing in connection with improvements, Soda Creek Road and Jack Tower Road. Resolution 15219, approve final resolution, utilities, sidewalk, grading and gravelling, concrete paving, Soda Creek Road and Jack Tower Road. Resolution 15220, award bid for Public Works contract number 15-06 to L. Dix Concrete, Inc., for concrete sidewalk, $937,390. Resolution 15-221, award bid for 3/4 ton four-wheel drive regular cab pickup truck and 3/4 ton four-wheel drive extended cab pickup truck for street division to LNS Truck Resolution 15-222, award bid for fiber optics slicing trailer for electric division to Millennium, $26,672. Resolution 15-223, authorize police department grants for a bicycle safety enforcement, $2,500; the speed enforcement, $10,000. Resolution 15-224, approval of special event LLC or LK Productions utilize Opera House Square and Market Street for square fair June 20, July 18, August 22, September 19, and October 17, 2015. This is another, Resolution 15-225, another special event for duty run to utilize city streets for Race the Lake, August 16, 2015. Resolution 15226, approve appointment for mayor, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Approve 2014 end-of-year fund transfers. Resolution 15-228, approval of combination Class B license, combination secondhand dealer license, and special Class B licenses. Mr. Peck, you would like to...
All right, yes, I would, at this time, I would ask to remove Resolutions 15204 and 15205 for separate consideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
I would also like to remove some items, though, Mr. Mayor.
No, there are.
Resolution 15206, I just have a question of 15209 and 15226.
Is there a second?
Second. Mayor, I have some questions on a couple of resolutions.
Okay.
Mr. Davis, the Resolution 15-202, I think we answered Mr. Gray's question as far as the money that was put into the state neighborhoods, but could you just give us a little brief what the economic impact of closing this district, the benefits to the City of Oshkosh for closing this district in? Does it follow along with what it was intended to? I mean, none of us were on the council, I think, when this TIF was formed, so did it meet our goal? Obviously, it meant our goals and everything, but could you just explain a little bit?
Yes, tax increment District Number 9 was Washburn Street, south from about Wauka down to Highway 26. And we extended sewer and water and other utilities to the south to encourage development along there. So all the development south of the Owlet Mall to include Bergstrom dealerships, all the way down to Plainview, and I believe even the hotel that was built there recently is all within this TIF district. And we added about $39 million of value to all the tax jurisdictions because of this extension of the utilities. So, and it provided additional income to eventually fund revolving loan fund and affordable housing. So there's been a lot of positives coming to the city. And when it comes to the school districts and the counties, they'll be getting their share of the tax revenue cash balance to be able to use anywhere they see fit in their budget.
Okay, very good. So, in other words, it was a very good economic decision and we're reaping the benefits of this tax increment financing district.
Yes, and we're closing it a few years early because it's performed so well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Pansky, your questions on Resolution 15206, 15209, and 15226?
Regarding 15206, if we just wanted to elaborate a little bit further on the increase and what we're going to do with the increase in funds on that regarding the Riverside parking lot?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We had discussed this at the previous meeting regarding the need to get additional parking in and around the city center area. And so there's kind of a bumping effect that we have here. City center needs some additional parking for the expansion for imprint. And we've identified some spaces in the CP lot next door to the fire station. So the bumping effect is that, that's typically used by the convention center for their, for a lot of their business. If, and we sped up the construction of the Riverside Park Lot Phase 2, the goal is to have it done by early June. And then the convention center would use that as their primary parking, freeing up spaces for city center. So that's, that's really the motivation for this and that's why we proceeded with this resolution. The other element to that is we're going to be using TIF 15 funds to sort of front the money for it because TIF 15 is actually for city center. So the logic in our eyes was that it was, it was appropriate to use TIF 15. The idea is we will pay it back over the next two years. We're essentially fronting money that we normally use for our parking replacement program and we're just bunching it, we're going back to 15 and taking care of it. And that's going to have to replenish TIF 15 over the next two years.
And we are taking some items out of the CIP in regards to this as well?
Yeah, well, we had to reprioritize some of our parking lot projects. We're still doing a part of the senior center parking lot... We're still doing a part of the senior center parking lot, but the, we've got a long list of parking projects that Mr. Collins, I had to remember that, because Chris, Chris Strong was also working on it, but Jim Collins has updated that list, and we have a long list of projects that need to get done. They were all very worthy candidates for getting replaced, but because of the for imprint thing, it just kind of pushed up the list.
Thank you.
So it's, part of this is to facilitate job growth in the center city area?
Yeah, we're looking at probably, well, they're only asking for about a hundred and seven spots, but we're probably looking at a couple hundred jobs when all is said and done.
I have one more question off of that. Besides the senior center, we're also taking money out of the transit budget?
No, I, transportation is involved because Jim is, Mr. Collins is responsible for the parking.
But there's three items here, senior center, salt flooring is being deleted, that money?
Those are, I think those are the ones that Council Pansky referred to.
And there's major parts for buses, transit, we're taking money from? There's three items that say delete in that, and they all got asterisks behind it.
Give me a second, let me go to that, it's part of the staff report. Those are parking lot improvements that we were going to do, that we're not, that we're going to defer as a result of this.
But there's also a grand carpeting in there?
I, I think Ms. Larson might have some, some feedback.
All right, yeah, please, thanks for rescuing me.
And maybe I'm reading it wrong, too, but there's all kinds of asterisks, so I'm kind of confused.
Those would be the staff adjustments prior to the approval of the two thousand and fifteen CIP. So they're not necessarily related to the action tonight, but what we're trying to do is trying to track that CIP, so we have one fluid document that shows all adjustments to the adopted two thousand and fifteen CIP.
Don't blame Trina, she coached me, I just blew it. I didn't know. All right.
Thank you for clearing.
So the only one that we're really not moving forward with is this flooring replacement? You mentioned that, or we're just adjusting how much is going, or whatever?
What we want to do moving forward? Trina and I discussed what we wanted to present to council in terms of, because this is amending the CIP. You recall that when we presented the CIP to you in September, the grand project was in there, and then the council reduced it. So we're just keeping a running tab of all the changes you made, I'm sorry, I think that's where you were going, and I wasn't looking at that exhibit.
That's why I got confused.
I'm sorry, my, my bad, Trina trained me on this, and I just, I'm not a good student, so.
All right.
Thanks, Trina. But yeah, those are the ones that were changed, you recall that we cut a couple things during the budget process, and we just want them reflected here, so if we make a CIP change any other time this year, you're going to see all this stuff, and just remind me that I forgot to tell you tonight, back when we do it again, but the whole idea is to keep a running tab of this. I think it's going to help the finance department keep track of all our CIP adjustments from our source document.
Okay.
Thanks for.
Mayor, I have another question. Couple of questions. Resolution fifteen dash two one six, probably Mr. Godey probably can speak on this one. It's a developer agreement on Soda Creek. I brought a question up this morning, and the reason I want to bring it up tonight is I, current council members, other than our two newest council members, remember getting email from a gentleman on Edgewater Road. Concern I have are these developer agreements to where citizens buy lots, or citizens, you know, here's a development, and it's to go to street improvements, sidewalk improvements in those subdivisions, and then all of a sudden the developer defaults, and now, you know, so Mr. Godey gave me a great explanation this morning to how we're tightening this all up and making some changes in our developer agreements, and I just think it's worth council hearing that whole, little bit of information, so that we understand that we've tightened a lot of these things up, and developer agreements are much stronger, and it does not expose our citizens as much as maybe previous ones, so.
All right, thank you. What we have changed in the development procedures is actually the financial guarantees have been essentially extended for another year past the construction timeline that is supposed to happen. What has happened in the past when it was a set number of months from the approval, it would, could terminate mid-construction season, the project may or may not be done at that point in time in the final year, so we've extended that letter of credit to give the city ample time to allow the contractor to meet the completion dates that are set in the developer agreement, but still have those financial guarantees carried well beyond that completion date. In the event the developer fails to meet those dates, then we can still call those letters of credit. If the developer does meet all the requirements, we can then do an early release.
Thank you.
Can we go back to Ms. Pansky? She had two, she had two more.
I just was going to say, Councilor Pansky still had two other.
Right.
Yeah, resolution fifteen two oh nine, and back to Mr. Godey. I do not work for the DNR, I, if you could just explain a little bit on these wetland mitigation credits?
Certainly, the ninth and Washburn detention basin is going to disturb approximately four-point acre, four-point-six acres of wetlands that are on the site. In order to get our permit from the DNR for the project, we either have to not disturb those, which will greatly reduce the flooding control impacts of the basin, or we need to go into a program to replace those. There's currently not a bank of wetland credits available, so we're buying into the program of paying the DNR to basically create wetlands in some other portion. We have to buy one point four or five acres of wetland.
Is that here in Oshkosh, or can that be anywhere?
They can, they can construct them anywhere. And so we pay, pay their set fee for that in order to be able to disturb the wetlands to construct the detention basin.
Excellent, thank you.
We have a question on fifteen dash two two six.
Yes, I was just wondering if this is going to be a permanent change for us, or if this is just regarding the current term?
It is permanent until council decides otherwise, and this, I think, should be permanent. I think the more engaged we have our council members at the East Central, at the league, it's been improving and increasing over the last few years, and I think this is a good positive move. Mayor Cummings accompanied me to last Friday's meeting, and we lived to tell about it, so.
It was quite, it was quite painless.
But I think that and the league, you know, getting council more engaged.
I like the change, I support the change, so I just wanted to make, ask the question if it was a permanent.
It was just convenient that he was available and can do it, but I think it would be very good if this made, stayed this way.
And to follow what Mr. Rov said, we're trying, we as a council are trying to make ourselves more visible in these type of associations throughout the site, including the league, a number of us went down last fall, and I think we came back with some good information, and people noticed that there were a lot of council members there from Oshkosh, so.
And even a plane commissioner, if I recall, so.
Yes.
All right, I, I have one more, and this is more of just a typo correction, I'm sure Ms. Hubrig missed it, but under consent item five, you forgot the JR.
I will add that council member pack.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more comment on a consent agenda item. Resolution fifteen dash two two three, I just want to compliment the police department for getting the two grants. I think that bicycle safety enforcement is something that is badly needed in Oshkosh. We have, I've been driving around, and especially the roundabouts, I see a lot of issues where bicycle safety is, is important, where the bike and pedestrian plan, which Ms. Pansky serves on, is adding more and more bike routes, and so I think it's important that our citizens are aware of bicycle safety and the enforcement side of it, too, for the riders, and then the speed enforcement. We've gotten, obviously, lots of complaints on the Jackson Street corridor, some of our other major streets, so I just want to compliment the police department in these tight budget times, continuing to go out and get these grants to cover the cost of our officers, doing some extra enforcement and educating our citizens in those, those two areas. Thank you, Mayor.
I have a question on resolution fifteen dash two oh eight. Took me a while to figure out what this resolution was about. Could Chief Franz kind of explain what this is, the request, renew agreement to provide personnel to the state of Wisconsin structural collapse team?
Does this refer to their budget?
The state of Wisconsin has a, a team that responds to structural collapses throughout the whole state that's made up of members of the larger fire departments throughout the state, and rather than, they're unable, it's not reasonable for them to maintain that, that force on their own. So what they've done is contract with municipalities throughout the state, so that in the event one of these incidents would occur, they could call on our personnel, and we would provide them up to eleven personnel from our department to respond to that particular incident, and then in turn, they provide the training for those personnel and reimburse us for the cost of doing that.
Thank you.
Chief, one question, is that just in Winnebago County, or is that like a region, like a, you know, Green Bay, Brown County, Adagame?
Green Bay does supply some personnel, the team is actually based out of Volk Field, and that's where, in the western part of the, the state, and that's where they have their equipment and, and carry out all their training from there, but they would respond through all the entire state of Wisconsin, and they would respond to incidents such as if there were a tornado, or any, anything that would cause a building to collapse.
And just on a budgetary item, I, I see that the city gets reimbursed forty-five dollars per hour for their services. If those, if those firefighters are, are gone for an extended period of time, do we get any reimbursement for the overtime that we have to cover while those, those firefighters are somewhere else?
Yes, and what would really have, once they're deployed, it'd be at the point where it would fall into a disaster, under a disaster response, and then we'd be reimbursed for their cost, and as, and as well as replacing them.
And it's a benefit to, to obviously, the, the city and the citizens of Oshkosh, because if we have a collapse right here in the city, we have trained personnel right here.
Correct, that's another benefit of that, is that we have folks that have this higher level of training, and then they can bring some of those, not, not the full level of training that they have, but some of the general operational training and share it with our, our people here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we had a motion to remove resolution fifteen two oh four and fifteen two oh five. Was that?
Yeah, they don't require motions, they're just, they're pulled.
Oh, they're pulled, okay.
So we need, we do need a motion for the whole consent agenda, though.
Then I would move for consent agenda with fifteen two oh four and fifteen two oh five pulled.
Can I take the roll call?
Alison Nosby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
And then I would move to, excuse, Ms. Hubrig, can we do these together, or do we have to do them as separate?
Separate.
Okay, so then I would move for fifteen two oh four at this time, approval of fifteen two oh four?
Roll call?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Actually, I pulled them because they're, Mr. Gray had some questions, and Mr. Taves and Ms. Larson are here to address it. These are rather large item, large dollar items, and one of our, as we discussed at our organizational meeting, when we have these things, we, in order to allow our community to understand what we're doing a little bit better, you know, I wanted to bring this forward, that Mr. Gray had some questions, and rather than go back and forth, I thought we could just handle it all at once.
May, may, may I speak before the council? Okay, thank you, I, I will crack through the procedure. I, I was asking, my first question was in regards to the refinancing component of this, I think it's basically plus nineteen million, and I was just wondering what is the expected or hopeful savings on bonus points on the refinancing? And I, I will let somebody answer that, and I have four or two other questions.
Good evening, I'm Todd Taves with Ellers. With respect to the refinancing, there's actually two refinancing pieces embedded within these issues. Within the nineteen point eight million dollar Geo Corporate Purpose Bond, about twelve point four five million of that is for refinancing purposes, so this is replacing existing debt. The anticipated savings resulting from that refinancing is about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Also included within the stormwater issue of fifteen million, five sixty, there is a smaller refunding, about two point eight eight million of the issue is for refinancing purposes, and that is expected to save about two hundred and seventy-one thousand in debt service payable from stormwater revenues.
Thank you.
I, I got two, two other quick questions. First of all, I want to compliment Ms. Larson in figuring down the CIP in regards to the general funds, in regards to the long-term bonds of twenty years and the notes for ten years. Question I have is, there was, there's also a state fund, I'm sorry, state trust fund, a component of two hundred thousand dollars, and I was just wondering, is that for any specific TIF project, and is that going to be delayed in, asking for, to get the delay in payment of the principles?
That would be for the current TIF project for the railroad spur. I don't know the TIF number offhand, but that is directly related to a TIF and a project that is proposed in the two thousand and fifteen CIP.
I have a question, Ms. Larson. Would this refinancing and, and savings, is that going to strengthen our stormwater utility commission? I mean, we've had some issues where we've had to raise rates the last few years because we didn't have the dollars available to cover the cost. Is this going to help maybe us not having to raise our rates, or doesn't it not have enough of an impact, or we don't know yet?
There will be a savings to the stormwater. Will that eliminate the need for a rate increase? I cannot say yes to that. I would anticipate with the investment that is ongoing in the stormwater utility, that will require contribution from the stormwater utility, and that does necessitate a long-term rate increase structure. That is something we work on annually, though, with our partner Ellers, to ensure that we are attempting to minimize and, and have a consistent and no spikes within that stormwater utility rate base.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe it's TIF eighteen where the railroad spur project is going.
And, and I can reiterate with the stormwater, those questions are coming up in the stormwater utility as well, about rate increases. We're already, Mr. Godey can attest, we're already asking as, as a committee for numbers, preliminary numbers, to start making those decisions for this year, next year, and I think we're asking for, what, five years out in terms of financials, to be able to plan ahead so that there's no major surprises with the stormwater utility.
Very good, thank you.
Non-staff response to Mr. Hulman's question regarding utility rates. I believe there definitely will be a utility rate, because the utility rate is basically based on the profit and loss statement plus a percentage of the investment with the utility. So we're basically investing, what, fifteen million dollars, and I think the current, current investment rate is something like five percent, so we take five percent of that, plus the payment of that extra bond, and that needs to be paid somehow, and that's paid by, basically, by rate increases. The last question I have is, will this refi, I, I think the answer is no, but will this refinancing affect the tax levy and the expense of restraint for the budgeting?
In terms of the tax levy, that portion, that's part of the Geo Corporate Purpose Bonds, it pays, the original bond issue paid for some pit projects, some water projects, some sewer projects, there is a levy component to that, so that portion of the savings that's allocable to the levy portion of the issue, that would result in actually a reduction in the tax levy, all other things being equal. So that savings will be a portion amongst levy, as well as utilities and a couple of pits.
Maybe in November? Maybe in November? Maybe in November.
I would not anticipate that impacting the expenditure restraint as expenditure restraint is directly related to our general fund budget, our operating budget.
Thank you. We vote on each one separately. So we need a motion?
No, we have the motion.
Okay.
Would you like me to call?
Yes, call 15-204.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
I would move 15-205.
I will second, I will second that.
Discussion.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, so now we'll move to new ordinances. There are three, three of them and there will be no formal action taken on either, any of the three. Ordinance 15-229, approval of relocation of the pedestrian hybrid beacon on High Avenue. Ordinance 15-230, approval of parking regulation changes on Elmwood Avenue and Ninth Avenue. Staff does recommend waiving the rules and adopting on first reading.
Mr. Mayor, at this time I would move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading of ordinance 15-230.
Second.
Is there discussion? Please take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 15-.
No, that was, I'm sorry, that was to suspend the rules, now we need a motion.
So I would move approval of ordinance 15-230.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
I want to ordinance 15-231, approval of parking regulation changes on Wheatfield Way.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rulings on this one. There's several citizens here that are concerned over this issue. The parking, or the traffic review board already approved it and there's no financial impact to making this ordinance change, so I'd make a motion to waive the rules and adopt them first reading.
And I second.
Your name, please, and address.
Thank you. My name is Amy Lacoste, I live at 1471 Wheatfield Way. Just a few things, when this, when the signs went up, the residents that were affected with the no parking signs were not notified at all. Apparently the committee notified the people on the 1200 block instead of the 1400 block. And we were also informed the reason for the signs being put up was due to a very serious accident that occurred in December. There was information that there were parked cars on, on the street at the time of the accident, that's not the case. The reason for the accident was a teenager traveling over 90 miles an hour while under the influence with no headlights on. There were no cars whatsoever on, on the street at the time. Since the signs went up, people are actually traveling much faster than posted speed limit because there are no cars slowing them down. And on the 1200 block, there is a much more of a curve than the one that's by the 1400 block. And finally, my neighbors that live at the 18, or, I'm sorry, at 1280 Wheatfield Way has lost all parking in front of his residence. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, are you making?
Yeah, I make a motion that we waive the rules and adopt them first reading.
Second.
And I, when we had a second.
So we have to vote on that.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now I make a motion to ordinance 15-231 that we approve the parking regulations.
Second.
Discussion. Please take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 15-232, establish street grades Soda Creek Road, Jack Tower Road. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
I second.
Discussion.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 15-.
I will, that was to waive it. I will make a motion to recommend for approval 15-232, establish street grades for Soda Creek Road and Jack Tower Road.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing, this ties in with many of the items on the consent agenda that were related to Soda Creek Road and Jack Tower Road.
Correct.
Please take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 15-233, authorize public construction Soda Creek Road, Jack Tower Road and staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a recommendation to waive the rules and adopt in the first reading for ordinance 15-233.
Second.
Discussion.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We're now at the point of council discussion.
Mayor, now we need a motion to vote on it.
Sorry about that.
I would move for approval of 15-233.
Second.
Discussion. I'll take the roll.
Alison Osby.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now we're at council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. First is workshop on road diets, proposed joint meeting with traffic review board and plan commission, May 12 at 4:00 PM.
I believe Council Herman's on the, on the committee that had the discussion about this.
That's correct.
Okay. The traffic review board, it seems like they think there'd be a good idea to talk to the council about the road diet concept in general. They've been having some discussions specifically on Murdoch and knowing that the traffic review board is going to be meeting on May 12, they asked, and it's totally optional, I know some people's schedules is not going to make it to work, but if you can come at 4 o'clock and have a discussion, they also suggested inviting the plan commission because of the traffic impacts that the plan commission deals with as well. If you can make it, great, if you can't or show up late, that's okay too. We just wanted to have an opportunity, or I think the committee wanted to have that opportunity. I'm not sure, Mr. Herman, if you have anything else to add about that.
Just, yeah, this, this is being driven from the issues and problems we have with Vinland at, at the intersection with Murdoch and at the traffic and the angles that they have to get to Elmwood Road. And if you're not familiar with road diets, we approved one on Sawyer Street when we put in the bike pedestrian lane and this is also on the bike and pets long-range plans for, for putting bike routes along there so that the potential to access the Y Wash Trail can happen through there. At the public hearings, there was some concerns by a couple citizens that own businesses along there that are concerned and there was some discussion and this may come up in the meeting of looking at a roundabout at Vinland and Murdoch instead of a road diet because of the concerns of the businesses. And a couple of them are expanding, some of them have been there a long time, but the state of Wisconsin does support this. I believe this is a part of a truck route if I'm not mistaken, so that's why the state of Wisconsin is part of this discussion. So that's why the traffic review board felt it would be good to have a workshop with the council because we're going to see this coming up in the future on other sections of the streets in Oshkosh because of our bike and pedestrian plan along with some of our traffic-related issues on some of our busiest streets. So I support this workshop.
So again, it's totally optional, hope you, hope you can make it. The next workshop is exclusively for council. This is the one that council requested. Mr. Fitzpatrick and I had an opportunity to meet with Associated Financial Consultants, they're the group that council recently approved hiring. They're ready to make a presentation on June 9. I'm happy to report that they're working on putting together an RFP for health insurance services for the coming year that will include an option for a fully insured plan so you can have that ability. That will not be on June 9, but they're just going to be working on that. I think the RFP will be out by June 9, so you'll be able to see that. But I think if they want to get acquainted with the council, this is a new firm that we just hired, so you'll all have an opportunity to get up to speed on where we are today with health insurance. Probably the biggest issue is what's happening with Affordable Care Act and the Cadillac tax that's due to kick in in 2018, where we stand with that and how we're going to be able to respond to that. The third item is not necessarily a workshop, but we'd like to give the council a presentation on the Marion Road water tower design. I know the mayor's familiar that the RDA has taken up an issue about doing some land sales to, to the utility to do this, but the design issue is something that was brought up several months ago. Councilor Pansky had brought it up and we wanted to have that discussion. I think if we just had a brief presentation, 10, 15 minutes at the beginning of the council meeting to get council up to speed on it, I think that might do the trick. After we have this meeting tomorrow with the RDA, I think we'll have a better idea of when we want to do it, but if we do it, it'll just be in the confines of your 6 o'clock council meeting. And then the other one was something that council brought up, so I'll throw that back to you guys.
I think I brought it up initially at Oshkosh, probably when we had some little extra time. Winnebago County has, the county board has had a kind of like a legislative update or meetings with their, the local legislators. And I think with council getting more involved with the league of municipalities and that, that's one stand, but I think it's important that we as a council meet with our local legislators, with Senator Gudek and legislators Schrah and Hints to talk about issues of state budget that directly affect the city of Oshkosh. With two new council members coming on board, getting closer to our work, discussion of the, of the city budget, I think it's important that we have that meeting with our local legislators to talk about issues that directly affect Oshkosh. We've done a couple resolutions this year already about the budget that the state's putting together, one with the university and one with the prison system. And last year we lost revenue sharing again from the state, so I think, as I mentioned, we, a meeting with the legislators would be good. It doesn't have to be a workshop, it could be just a meeting at a, at an agreed upon location, but I think it could be almost kind of driven by us, by topics that we want to talk about that directly affect the city. And actually, we talked to legislator Hints about it, he was totally on board. His whole district is in the city of Oshkosh, so he saw benefit to that. So I would like to see staff move forward with maybe making a recommendation of a daytime location and let them kind of research maybe some issues that they feel would be important at a discussion like this. So I just thought I'd bring it up before that and if any other council members want to comment on it, feel free.
Well, I think this is, excuse me, a great idea and to kind of piggyback on that, this related to budgets, Ms. Larson and I are working with Mr. Taves who we saw earlier today in relation to the long-range finance committee of bringing Mr. Taves in and doing what we would like to do is have a joint meeting of the LRF as well as the council. We have two new members on council and I for one think it's a, would be of benefit for those of us who have been here for a while to get a refresher on levy limits. So like I said, Ms. Larson and I had a teleconference with Mr. Taves today. They are putting together some information and then we'll be getting back to scheduling something. And I would imagine that probably by the next meeting, possibly, yeah, I would imagine at least by the next meeting, possibly by the packet, a week from this coming Friday, we may have something for council, but I just wanted to at least bring that to you that this is in process.
I really, I spoke about it in my presentation, intergovernmental communication and cooperation is vital, particularly in the changing dynamics that we have in our state. So the more time we can have with our voices preaching to our legislators, the better to make sure that they understand how we feel and that we understand the limitations that they're under so that we can work together to get the best solutions for our citizens.
And I would suggest sooner than later. I mean, it is, it is almost May, believe it or not.
I was actually in Madison this morning as an advocate for UW-Oshkosh Head Start, met with Senator Gudek and Representative Hints and I would gladly do that again. It was a wonderful experience and, and I would, I would support this meeting as well.
Would you like me to see when they're available at an upcoming, before a council meeting? Is that, would that be your preference? Before a council meeting or?
Yeah. I think if we could do something on a council night, if it works for, for at least the majority of them, like a 4:30, 5:00. I know some of us, some council members still work, so 5:00. I mean, I don't think it has to be real long, especially if we focus specifically on certain topics and, and have them be prepared to address kind of those issues, how they would have an impact on us and, you know, get their opinion of where they think the budget's going and, and that, so.
The other thing, the, the other thing though, I'd like to add to that is because I, you know, I have communicated with them and I know a number of evenings they are committed and gone, so if for some reason it would need to be an early morning, pre-work, I'm certainly open to that as well.
Me too. Yep, mornings would work for me.
I'm flexible.
Stormwater meetings are already at 7:00 in the morning, so, 7:30, so I'm used to getting up.
Okay, yeah, so like a 7:30-ish type of meeting would work as well.
I think that county board meets at like 9, so mornings are good for our legislators, so.
Yeah, sometimes they got to take off from Madison, so getting them early.
Yeah.
I think we've had some success at the chamber governmental affairs, so I'll kick around some ideas with them and, and I'll throw out some, some dates for council to consider. Very good.
Mayor, before you move on to number 39, if I could just make a comment, I had this discussion this morning with the city manager and we talked about closing the TIF today and the benefits of it. I'd like to get a report, possible in the next couple of weeks maybe of what TIFs are out there yet, where do they stand, what ones are profitable, what ones are underwater, maybe even some type of a little bit of a forecast of where we think we're going with some of them. I think it would help, be helpful to our new council members and I don't think we've gotten an update on council for quite some time though. I think probably since the budget hearings last fall, so if we could get an update, I would appreciate it.
You might want to be nice to Ms. Larson in the back of the room since that'll be in her area.
Oh, all right.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And the last is, the council compensation committee, this came up prior to Mayor Tower retiring, I believe Councilman Herman and he talked about looking at adjusting pay for council. And I would suggest that Councilman Herman and I meet with Mr. Fitzpatrick and work on this. I don't know if we were to appoint another council person, will we have to notify these meetings?
Once you establish a committee, doesn't matter what's the sizes, it's a governmental body, so as many as you want, it's going to get noticed.
What are your feelings, Mr. Herman? Do we need more people or? Do we need more people, or?
I don't think so. I think we've already, I think, other than the two council members, we've all gotten information upfront, and I'm sure we can get that, those statistical information to the other council members on salaries around the state and where we, we stand. And unless another council member wants to join us, that'd be great. Otherwise, I think we can do it with the two of us, along with Mr. Fitzpatrick, bring something forward to council. Council have to decide, you know, one, the compensation, if we move forward with it, what it would be. And then, two, what type of implementation process, because some of the council get selected, you know, one term. Another, half of the council gets elected a different term. So, how we would want to implement a salary change, if there is one, and any other benefits that might go along with council. Because currently, other than the stipend that we get, we get a council email, and there are no other compensations other than, we do get mileage and things for meetings and things if we submit it. So, I'm open if anybody else wants to get, get involved in the discussion.
Just let me know if anybody else wants to sit in on this. We're at the second point, where citizen statements to council, again, the same rules apply as the first time. Is there anyone in the chamber who wants to talk with us? All right. Now, we're at city manager announcement, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. First off, the one on, that's one listed, the league legislative luncheon is on May 13. This is when we go down to Madison, and the league has a meeting with, they usually have somebody on one of the, the joint finance or one of the, the majority leaders. I can't remember who it is this year, but we have that. And then they usually try to pair you up at the table with as many local legislators as you can. So, I know that Mayor Cummings, Councilman Herman have already signed up. If anybody else is interested, it's at noon, so we'd probably be leaving ten fifteen-ish so that we can make sure we get parking and everything. So, we'd probably be about ten fifteen-ish till oh, three thirty or so. So, if anybody else is interested, just contact my office, email, phone, whatever, we'll, we'll get you in.
Mr. Roloff, at this point, I do have an interest in going, but currently, I do have a business commitment. I am working on trying to see if that can be rescheduled. If I can, I would love to go. If not, but hopefully, I'll know by the end of the week.
I think they take last minute, so don't worry about it. Just let me know when you're ready to go, and we'll take it. And then two other, well, three other items. Mayor asked me, I wrote him down, Mayor. Yard waste pickup started yesterday, and that's the spring cleanup. It's on your regular garbage day, so special pickup. And then after that, it'll be the first week of the month on your regular garbage day. Excuse me, Mr. Roloff. And as well, I, I remind citizens, when you're cutting your grass, you're blowing your sidewalks off or whatever it is, please do not blow your clippings into the street. It goes directly into the stormwater system and has an impact on our algae blooms and everything else within Lake Winnebago. So, please blow your clippings towards your lawn. Don't blow them into the street. And Mr. Godey is smiling. So am I.
Also, on that note, if you do decide to burn your leaves or whatever, please be courteous of your neighbors. I have received.
You can't? I said, you can't.
Well. Don't write them out.
Camp, you know, campfire or whatever you have now that the weather is getting nicer. I have had some complaints of people wanting to have windows open, and they are annoyed by the, the noise at night and the smoke coming into their homes. And so, please be courteous to your neighbors. Invite them over if you have to.
And one additional thing with the spring cleanup, they, the leaves and so forth have to be in paper biodegradable bags.
Right. And, and collect your, any branches and that, and keep them together so that they're easy for the folks to take away. And then the mayor reminded me that the zoo opens on Saturday, so.
Ten AM.
Take a look at what's going on over there, the changes that we've made with the wolf exhibit and whatnot.
Four new wolves.
And then I have a happy report that we've, we finally nailed down a date for the grand opening celebration for the Public Works Field Operations Facility. We have it scheduled for Saturday, May 30. That is not Memorial Day weekend. There's actually a fifth Saturday in May, so it's after Memorial Day but before Farmer's Market. We don't want to compete with Farmer's Market. We're going to have a nine to noon ribbon cutting at ten, and there'll be, throughout the morning, there'll be demonstrations. We're going to really just not only show off the facility, but some of the services we provide. So, I know it's a little bit, just letting you know, springing it on you, but we wanted to get it before summer started, and then everybody's running in a zillion different directions. So, hopefully, you'll be able to, to make it for that day. Ms. Walt, you have that notice? Do you have that? Thank you.
I, I will not be there. That's the day my daughter gets married. So, I think I have a, another obligation that is a little more important.
Come on, Steve, where's your priority?
Excuse, excuse. I think you have another announcement, too, Mr. Roloff. You're losing a longtime employee.
I'm, I'm losing two longtime employees, so thank you, Mr. Herman. My administrative assistant, Jan Bellman, twenty-one-year veteran of the city, will be retiring as of Friday. We had a little get-together for today. We're going to certainly miss Jan. And Mr. Pottek, our Public Works Director for the last seventeen years, will be retiring on May 8. He actually needs to burn up some vacation before he leaves us. I don't understand the logic.